So, meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers. At one, one, two, three, Westlake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Graham, presiding. Also President, present our council president Deb Rule, counselors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard. Under the city's adopted code of ethics and stability is the presiding officer. I'm going to identify law enforcement personnel serving as sergeant of arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon in the back of the room. If everyone will please stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, council members, the purpose of this evening's special meeting is a workshop requested by the council to review the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. This is identified on the agenda as an action item for any recommendations or changes that may be voted on in council this evening. Um, we may not have direct actions, recommendations, and motions. We'll see where we get through. Um, but we will now get underway with the workshop. Holly Ellis, Public Works Director is going to lead this and um, I think it's going to be um, a bit unique in the sense that uh, um, we're going to try to work through some of the priorities. Uh, we'll talk about some of the pros and cons of pivots and um, yeah, have some fun looking at uh, how a street uh, works in Sandpoint. So with that, Holly, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Uh, so tonight we are here to discuss more in more details, the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. Um, I have a map of the project here on the table so we can get around and look at details and go parcel by parcel. This is a um, scaled map. From the design, um, also in front of you, which is very exciting, is our Cedar Street right of way. So one of our challenges is that it's a fifty foot right of way. Um, so we have a couple scenarios in front of you that you'll probably be playing with while I'm talking. So um, maybe we start with that, um. And what, while I'm talking, you guys can be building your right of ways. So I think, Rick, you need a map.
I do, and Kyle asked.
As well.
And you might lose control if you give us these toys.
I should have, um, I should have not passed them out yet. I've seen, seen people have that approach before, but.
I have young kids still.
No, you weren't to teach him. You'd never give the gadgets out at first. I'd never get attention back.
Yeah, so does everyone have a map? Mr. Mayor, would you like a map?
Uh, I think I've played with the map enough.
Well, you can look at our maps. So at the bottom is the proposed concept, which I'll speak to now and give a little bit more detail. Um, we have a six foot right of way, or sorry, a fifty foot right of way. Um, coming from left to right, six foot sidewalk. Um, the reason for a six foot sidewalk is we have, and so I'll talk about each element from left to right and also describe the why. So um, from left to right, we have a six foot sidewalk. The reason is we have a complete streets ordinance that when we reconstruct streets, we accommodate pedestrian and bicycle access. We also have a city standard detail for sidewalk that prescribed six foot wide sidewalk on both of those sides of the street for a collector road. Cedar Street is a collector road identified so in our multimodal transportation plan. The next element is a planter strip, six to eight foot wide. Our right of way does vary and it's our right of way varies along the corridor. The planter strip varies in width. The purpose of that six foot wide planter strip is to provide for stormwater, snow storage in the winter, and street planting or tree planting in alignment with our urban forestry plan. The next element is a shero road, two twelve foot vehicular lanes. Twelve feet lanes are the city standard per the adopted urban area transportation plan. Uh, the reason that sheros are denoted is to accommodate bicycle traffic in accordance with the complete street. So that is the alignment for our streets, uh, Cedar Street corridor. What's not accommodated here is parking notably, um, nor are multi-use paths. Uh, we have a very narrow right of way that we're working with, trying to balance multiple priorities. Ultimately, the reason, um, or the layout of this street does align with our urban area transportation plan. And I do have, um, I have, just showing my screen here. I do have that typical section in this packet. For the UATP.
We have a question. This is uh, Councilor Rule, um. Is the narrowest fifty or the widest part of our right of way fifty?
The narrowest.
Okay.
So as I, I think.
That's all I needed was, thank you.
Plan and strip varies. Rotate this page, bear with me. Rotated the wrong line. Here is um, a snip of our urban area transportation plan. This plan was adopted in two thousand and eight. It has since been updated. Um, the purpose of its most recent update was to look at the capital improvement priorities in that plan. The UATP is a multi-jurisdictional plan. It was put together with partners from Bonner County, Cootney, Pondure, and Sandpoint. Um, back in two thousand and eight, they identified the need to have standard street sections. So the plan was adopted. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the plan was updated and with that update, they really focused on capital improvement plans that would benefit all the jurisdictions. So these uh, standards have held through in our remainder of the city's um, standard for our roadway sections. Uh, Brandon Stackland, our city engineer, has the goal to develop Sandpoint-specific street standards and um, to have all of our streets have a standard profile. Until then, we use our UATP as our guiding document. So we're really in alignment with the standard uh, here. This is a sixty foot right of way for it's a collector. Unfortunately, we have a fifty foot. But their plan shows two twelve foot travel lanes, a center lane at fourteen foot wide, a planter strip at five foot wide and six foot wide sidewalk. With curb and gutter.
Quick question, Kyle Schreiber. Uh, we're not legally bound to that, are we?
So what was that?
We're not legally bound to follow those standards?
It's our standard, so it's our, it's a guiding document for council and our starting point that we're doing um, consistent projects, but there would not, there's, there's nothing to hold council to that you can, as a body, make your decisions. But this is the plan that I pick up when I start my planning efforts. This is what I look to.
I ask a question.
Go ahead, Council.
Um. Is Ontario a collector street?
Let me pull up our multimodal map.
Just curious because it has, does not have sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Nothing in that. Nothing in that.
This is when we rebuild the street. Or do you do a development on, this is Mayor Grimm, um, if you're doing development on important in the street and you have to do your frontage improvements, we would apply the standard or the design anticipated.
But redoing all of our streets is not in the future.
This is our whole lot on this.
More one.
Like multiple years of scrapping to do one street.
One street.
Not even.
In our dreams.
Yes.
On the screen in front of you is the multimodal transportation plan with our street classifications as they are today. And Ontario Road is a collector.
It's a safe. It's a lot wider because it allows parking, right?
It's sixty foot wide. Right away.
I just walked down there today and it was really busy with traffic and so I noticed that it's a lot wider. There was only one sidewalk.
So with the um, with the typical street section that the plan is to apply to Cedar Street between Lincoln and Division. Um, I have a map here on the table mapping the improvements and I'm also showing on the screen uh, another map. So before we get to our, our game that we can play, I just want to highlight and walk through a few things. Um, working from Lincoln, so we'll work from west to a, west to east. Um, the yellow shows sidewalk on both sides of the street. The green indicates a planter strip and the red is new asphalt. So you can see that first block, we have a lot of improvements, new sidewalk. And new planter strip, new asphalt. The next block, we do have an opportunity. This was a recent development. I believe they're called Rigid Cedar and they were constructed in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, pretty, pretty recent. They have a new sidewalk and a new planter strip, street trees as well. Um, along here that we're able to save. So our road is in alignment with this newer development that was installed. Heading east, Madison, more improvements on both sides of the street. And I just want to highlight one more opportunity that we're saving existing sidewalk here right at Monroe. Um, this is a little bit older sidewalk, but they do have some nice tree, street trees here that we were planned to save.
A healthy question, Rick Howard.
Yes.
Um, can you go back to that picture? Um, there at Man, it was in Madison?
Madison here.
Yeah, can you blow that up just a little bit? Um, that's not a view. Was it farther to the east? What, what I was looking at, there was a section there where the side, right there, Monroe, sorry. Um, can you explain, I'm, I'm a proponent of straight sidewalks. Can you help me understand why at Monroe there we have to jog to the north cross? Why, why can't they go straight across? Why, why do we jog the sidewalk there?
This jog here.
Yes, yeah.
Um, a few reasons. One is our, our right of way that we're trying to stay within right of way. Let me zoom in even more to highlight it. This is this dash, uh, this line here, not the dash line. This back of sidewalk here is going to be right on our right of way.
Okay.
And heading north, it's right here. Uh.
But why do you have to jog to the north there? Why, why can't that just be straight across?
So there's two things I want to, we're restricted by our right of way and the other, so we we have right of way restriction and when we have our crosswalks, um, ADA best practice is to have all of our crosswalks to be perpendicular, not diagonal. So we have a right of way challenge here and our curb radius here. So you want your crossing to not be on a turn, not to be diagonal, but you want it to be perpendicular. So would you have those three restrictions, the narrow right of way, paralleled with not wanting to have a diagonal crossing and wanting to have a perpendicular crossing and not, and having it also as narrow as possible, you want to keep the ramp off this curve here. So it shifts it north. And so our, our pinch point to the north is that radius on that curve and then our pinch point to the east is this right of way line. So we're having to match these two.
And we radius those corners to help traffic turn versus a ninety degree angle?
That's right. Yep. So the reason that this is more circular is for vehicular lanes and vehicle turns. So that um, particular radius is fifteen feet. Fifteen feet.
I believe that's correct. I think they're all fifteen feet except for or here.
And then, oh, go ahead, finish.
All right, I didn't interrupt. I, it accommodates um, uh, delivery vehicle as our design vehicle. And um, it also accommodates our fire trucks. Those were the um, design requirements when they were designing that curve.
And if, if I might ask one other question, when we're thinking about sidewalk width, four feet, five feet, six feet, what is the cost difference to build a six foot wide sidewalk versus a five versus a four, I don't know, pick, pick a, I mean, four feet by one foot or five feet by one foot or six? How, how significantly different are those costs? And I'm only bringing that up because we don't have endless dollars. And so as I think about trade-offs, help me understand what the cost differential is as we think of different widths of sidewalks.
So when you, when you have a contractor who's mobilized and they've already bid a project and really it's a change in your, their quantities. So at that point, it's really not costing them labor or their move time. You're just looking at materials at that point. So it's not going from a, I don't have hard numbers for you, um, but going from a, it, it's not a, a quick five to six percentage of a sidewalk is therefore, you know, one sixth more. Um, it, you have uh, some cost savings. You're just looking at the material costs.
But if I just math, if I go from four feet to five feet, that's a twenty percent increase.
No, because the, since they're already mobilized, the labor is.
I'm just talking, I'm just talking material.
Material.
Just material, twenty-five percent more material.
Yes.
And then, six feet, I'd have to do the math, but you know, so a six foot versus a four foot is fifty percent more surface area. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
A five by four is twenty square feet, a five by six is thirty square feet, that's fifty percent more. So fifty percent more material cost to build a six foot than it is a four foot. And that's all I'm, I'm just trying to, it's significant.
I have a question, um, just to go along with that. I'm guessing that is in most of the rest of the world. When it comes to doing anything, the labor is the largest portion of the cost. And in this case, materials is going to be a cost, but it's not nearly as significant as your labor cost. Would that be accurate with building streets and sidewalks?
For the, for the most part, uh, rock is very expensive. So when you get into putting rock in our road, this is a very expensive project because we're building a full road base. So.
Materials project.
Generally, you need a balance. So when you're talking about sidewalk, it's very labor intensive. More of your costs are coming from labor, but when you get into a road construction, that's when it pivots to, those materials are very expensive.
Okay, that's a good thing to know that the sidewalks getting a little bigger is materials cost that isn't as expensive as getting a road bigger.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's good balance to understand.
And, and Holly, Ricky, uh, Councilman Howard, you might want to also understand some of the ADA requirements for widths and Holly, can you speak to that in terms of sidewalk width?
So Sandpoint has a five foot minimum sidewalk is adopted. On collectors and arterial, we strive for six foot at, for ADA considerations, four feet is the very minimum. There are very um, rare scenarios where your ADA will allow or pro-wag now will allow you to go as narrow as three feet. It's very limited to how long you can have a three feet, three foot sidewalk. So four foot is our absolute minimum, but for our standard and here in Sandpoint, five.
Thank you.
And just history, um, I, maybe someone can answer, maybe Deb. We did have an ADA complaint against the city and the feds came in. Um, this was like over a decade ago. And then it was not a fun experience and they pretty much tell you, you need to fix these. Yeah, and as you spend money, you need to spend money in compliance with ADA, so.
But five feet is acceptable for ADA sidewalk.
It's for, for, for.
But you didn't give us four footers.
I didn't give four footers here because five foot is Sandpoint standard. Um, so that people can pass each other comfortably. So six feet allows for two people in a wheelchair to pass comfortably on a sidewalk.
But for example, I just want to add, it's pretty common that we have a five foot sidewalk, but in order to save a tree, we'll neck it down to four feet and jog it around.
Do we know what the existing sidewalks are?
Um, the existing sidewalk is five feet at the rigid cedar, hopefully.
And that's the standard we make developers do when they do frontage improvements.
Okay.
So those that are already there are five feet.
That's right.
They were different sizes.
And there's a five foot chunk on the north side near Men, just west of the library, Monroe. And then there's five foot on the south side down by the new development.
Yes.
And in front of, there's what, two or three houses down there that have sidewalk, I think, next to the development on that south side of the street.
Down here.
Yeah, those are the ones I'm talking about that are right next to the development, those long narrow lots. They have sidewalk because they're newer, so they were required to put sidewalk. Okay, thank you.
I think before we, I, I have more to share on trees, but um, for this portion, if there's no questions on the history, we can dive into our exercise on building the roadway.
Oh, oh, thanks, Holly. Can I just summarize what we're hopefully going to do here tonight? Um, obviously, when we start a project like this, it starts in the budget. Last year, we put money in for initial design. Staff takes our standards. There's been a fair amount. This is sixty percent, is that right? Sixty percent of engineering for this. I don't know the total cost. Holly probably has that. Um, then, of course, this is a check-in confirmation. Um, we have this budgeted for this fiscal year, so these dollars to be spent, if we can afford it, um, by the end of October or beginning of October, end of September. So what we're trying to do tonight is try to come to consensus on what takes this to the hundred percent and the big documents. Um, recognizing there could be uh, divergent views. I would just ask you all that, however this shakes out tonight. I mean, it could be, go with the, the, the standard. It could be a direction to modify it with narrow lanes or consolidated mixed-use path. I guess I would ask that um, whatever we, wherever we land as a body, there are a few more steps that come beyond this, which is going to be the bid, the approval of the bid. Um, you know, moving into construction. I would just hope that if it doesn't go your way, um, we recognize we're a body and that this isn't going to be, you know, frustrations along the way. I didn't get my way or I don't like it. I've never liked it. I hope we can kind of be unified as a body that however our discussion goes tonight, it moves forward. And then finally, um, uh, we did take this out to public engagement. Um, Holly can tell you more about that. Um, that would be a potential opportunity to do again, but we feel that we, we heard a robust level of support from the, the neighbors on the street based on that public engagement. Um, going out to public engagement would probably kill this project for this fiscal year just because of the timing and where we're at now. You know, it would be another month to two months of engagement response, then into final design. And that has implications on how we pivot the dollars for this fiscal year. They're attributed here. We then have to shift those to other overlay or other street projects. So behind the scenes, there's a lot of scrambling that will have, have to happen and we're prepared to do that, but just keep in mind that we kind of have this clunky process where we start, we check in and we finish and it's all an attempt to have a smooth funding cycle and a smooth project cycle. With that, back to you, Holly. And can I ask one more question, Holly? I, I sent you some, just one article and I've done a bunch more research about cohabitating bicycles and cars. Have you looked into that? What are your thoughts? Because every, most everything I found said it is not a good idea. Uh, so before we start, before I start designing, I'd like to kind of keep your thoughts on. And again, I just sent you one snippet, but there's hundreds of articles that say.
Just to clarify, when you say sharing lanes, Councilman Sproul, um, do you mean like a designated bike lane and a car lane or just?
In, in this case, it's the same lane shared by cars and bikes.
Okay.
And the dangers to the bicycles are elevated in that situation versus some sort of a separate lane. At least in my research, so.
There's, there's a lot of research on that and there's a lot of research that kind of goes both way, I would say. Um, we, there, bikers also have very strong and differing opinions um, as to drivers. So there are people in Sandpoint and all over the country who are bikers and they prefer to drive in the road over having a dedicated bike lane. Um, this scenario of having sheros, no one is required to bike in the, the vehicular lane. But the purpose is to um, remind drivers that it is legal. It's very common in Sandpoint. It's in our downtown on Bridge Street has sheros, Oak Street has sheros. So we have a, many, our division also has shares. Many members in our community drive in the vehicular lane. It's legal. Um, when you have those lower, lower speeds. So the purpose of the shero is really to remind drivers that yes, this is okay. They are in fact supposed to take up the whole travel lane. And if you're a vehicular driver, you're supposed to be behind them. Um, it's really up to that biker to feel out their comfortability and whether they're comfortable biking in the road or if they need to take a path and take a longer destination to be on a multi-use.
So then, if they choose not to be in the roadway, how do they do, are they up on the sidewalk?
So in Idaho, uh, you are allowed to ride your bike on a sidewalk. Uh, we also have um, many pathways in town. So if you are on Cedar Street, you could opt to use the sidewalk. You could be in the road if you wanted, or you could take another road. Um, you might have to, if you wanted to be on a multi-use path in Sandpoint, we don't have them all over the place. So you're going to have longer commutes and um, kind of a, a windier commute as well.
Yeah, and I guess by sending you that article, what I'm trying to do is get away from bikers' preference to what does the science say when it comes to injuries of bikes when we cohabitate space? And I agree with you. There was something that was kind of mixed, but the majority of the research that I did and the science says you're going to elevate the potential risks to bikers by cohabitating. So I get it, people have preferences, but I think as stewards of the city, we owe it to our citizens to provide the capability, but do it in the most safe way that we can. And that's, that's I, I guess what I'm thinking. And, and this, this is definitely not the safest. Um, there is no scenario that they said this is safer than a separate bike lane. And really, they, I mean, a, on the side of the roads, they really would say have a separate bike lane where cars can't even interact would be the ultimate. And I know we may not be able to get there, but I think we can do some things beyond just what this is, so.
The, the only piece I, I agreed, I don't think that you said anything that was accurate. I think that that shero scenario, if we had unlimited resources and a limited right of way across the country, we'd have multi-use paths and.
Unlimited money, I would add to that because that's how that would work. Um, not to interrupt you, Holly, but I do want to point out that we do have restrictions in the downtown corridor about riding bicycles on sidewalks. They're not always um, abate, shall we say. Um, sometimes I think it's, it's appropriate to turn a blind eye to a small six-year-old child and let them ride on the sidewalk as long as they're being safe and not knocking over the pedestrian that's walking with a walker or a cane. So we, you know, we do have to use um, our best judgment when we're doing things. Um, so I don't think there's going to be a perfect scenario. I appreciate your want for a perfect amount of safety, but the majority of the gridded streets in Sandpoint, um, you don't have a ton of car traffic on, so you use them as needed. I ride constantly down the street that you live on, which is probably one of the busier cut-through streets.
Yeah.
Um, but I would, um, most of the time, I believe politeness works.
Still reigns, yeah.
It still does reign. Um, you know, there's always the small Charlie argument and there's always the elderly or disabled argument, but it's, it's not going to be a perfect world.
Yeah, to add to that, Councilman Sproul, I have a four-year-old, seven-year-old, nine-year-old, eleven-year-old. This is one of the main uh, routes we take to go to Traverse on our bikes. And we write, I mean, I'm more scared of the potholes with my kids than I am cars. Um, this is my experience. This isn't everybody's. The timeframe when we go after work and we ride down to Traverse and my wife takes them. I asked her how she felt and she was like, she rarely saw any cars going down here. That might be because how terrible it is. So we don't know what the traffic would be like and how fast people will be going when it is cleared up for, for what it's worth. Like, that's what we travel and my wife's in front, I'm in the back. So. So.
Yeah.
There's that experience as well.
And I would just say, but we have to be thinking forward that the population of San Point will continue to grow. Like these roads will get used more and more, I'm gonna guess as we move into the future, not less. Um, and so, yeah, I hear everything.
Yeah, and I would just add to the conversation that I used to, I did the chafe a couple years and um. Road, a lot of road biking and I, the the challenge for me as a biker. Was, you know, if you're on the shared pathway, there's people going really slow and you gotta weave and predict. And if you're on a road bike, you're going pretty fast. Um, you're actually going as fast as the cars frequently, twenty five miles an hour is nothing. So um, I guess I'd point out that in the absence of the sharrows. People who want to ride in the road can still ride in the road. And it's a pretty low speed road, so take the sharrows away and people are still gonna ride in the road, maybe on. Sidewalk if that's your thing, but. Yeah, good discussion.
I had one quick question, um, Brandon, well Holly probably knows this, wh- what's the width of the travel lane on Division now that we've necked it down?
Eleven feet.
Okay, thank you.
And the sharrows on Oak are not in the middle of the road, they're over by parked cars and that's dangerous to me. Just saying because people and they don't see you come in. That's just one issue I think with sharrows set aside. I prefer Pine's multi lane myself to head down that way. Because it's a multi lane, big path, so that is an option, I think those are a lot nicer than. Sharing a five foot side. Lots of options.
I did want to add one, one thing while we're on this topic, um, I I have the multimodal plan pulled up right here and. Just wanted to note that this section is not a pedestrian priority network or a bike priority network. But there's also no pedestrian priority network or bike priority network in this neighborhood or really. West of Division except for Pine Street, so uh I had a brief conversation with the Director Welker about this and he said maybe. Uh, we should look at it considering that it does connect to the uh Great Northern Park and Centennial Park right there, so um. You know, it it's a little bit of a um toss up for me that. You know, it's, it's not somewhere that we have said this is where we should be spending that pedestrian funding, but same time it does connect to a park, so. As Counselor Espiro said, it is a a popular route to get there.
Yep.
Can I say one thing as well, this is Counselor Dick, um, we talk about wayfinding and signage, we've talked about it for decades since I've been here in terms of. Paid city parking, riding your bike. Um, Counselor Duke had just brought up the sharrows are a little off center on Oak, we've got bike lanes, we've got parking. Uh, wouldn't it be cost effective, especially on a road like this to say? You can ride in the bike lane, you could ride in the sharrow, we recommend kids under ten ride on the sidewalks with their parents. Right, i- is that and something that we can do regardless of how we turn this whole thing out, right? Is to get some better signage all over the place, yeah, and consistent around town.
Yeah, I love it.
Especially as we're moving forward with whatever ends up happening with the parking downtown.
Love it, that's exactly the kind of thing I would imagine our commission's tackling as directed by the council.
So in front of you, you've got a map, um, this is Cedar Street, so the. Blue lines on either side dash lines, that represents the fifty foot right of way and then the red line dashed through the middle. Is the center line to give you some guidance, um. So. I'll have the same. If I could, I could share. One second, you can play with your um, street sections and see what you come up with and and I've got something. Be sharing as well.
Yeah, so take a couple minutes and and build a a street um as. You know, this isn't gonna be our preferred way to work through our street projects, but on this one thing.
You know, we could just save. Save your parts.
And parking is allowed on the site.
There is no parking in this scenario, that's um, it which is a pretty big deal out there today. Um, part of the road is not signed for parking under this scenario. Um, there is no parking on Cedar, so if you're a resident, you've got a driveway or you're parking on a side street.
They mostly do have driveways.
Yeah, there's one individual um on the end who has a trailer who he likes to park um on the street. Close to Lincoln. So this is a scenario, so I have parking, so um. When we're, we're trying to balance what should be in this right of way, parking is an option, um. So is, you know, different widths of pathways and sidewalks, so I, you know, if um. It's it's an alternative that could have been considered or could be considered for our our new street. And I do want to say this is a really fun, exciting project, it's a really big opportunity. Reconstruction of our road, this is my four years at San Point, this is the first road reconstruction that the city's been able to do, prior to that was the downtown projects. Um, so this is an opportunity for this corridor to just be very unified and. Um, something that everyone can be really proud of, at the open house that we held. The folks and the neighbors were so excited to get some new asphalt, um, and. Over overwhelmingly, it was a very positive, um. Open house that we held.
A couple of final things just to bring to your attention. Um, it's possible a Vista may be relocating in the near future. Right now, if you observe traffic on the street, you see a lot of their work trucks going out in the morning, coming in the afternoon, that's likely to go away. In the near, very near future. Um, and then also, as I looked at, there's two real trade offs here, three. This portion from Monroe to um here. We've got existing sidewalks, somebody paid thousands of dollars to put those in with all these pretty nice street trees in the planter. And then down in front of, as Holly mentioned, this new development on the south side. Same deal, they literally just put in all probably, I don't know, twenty thirty thousand dollars for the sidewalks there. So, you know, if you throw a bike path on one side, realize that could take out a tree, you could take out new sidewalk, if you throw it on this side. To widen that sidewalk to eight or ten, which we could possibly do, would be affecting that, those are the two. Big challenges I see.
And can you remind us what those words are, is that a five foot sidewalk there?
These are, the existing sidewalk is five feet in both scenarios.
And the planter strip is how wide here? In the areas that you say are, must be three, no?
No, it's it it's wider than that, uh, oh, this would be an an a new planter strip, so we'd be protecting these trees. So at this scenario, we have a wider right of way, so this is an eight foot wide planter strip.
I also would add along the same lines, every foot you take out of the planter strip is less. Opportunity for us to treat stormwater. Um, if that's something you care about.
Explain it to me.
Um, so we use, we use the grass in between the sidewalk and the curb to treat stormwater before it goes into our system.
Stormwater from the sidewalk, stormwater from the road.
From the road, from the drive surfaces.
So it flows in, it goes over the grass and then at the end of that grass, it's graded and goes into a pipe that ends up behind my house, so.
So while you're making your um different street sections, I can speak a little bit more to stormwater, um. By taking all the street water and putting it into green strip, it gives opportunity for the water to be treated before it enters a pipe.
We know that qualifies us for future, um, once we hit ten thousand people, that qualifies treatment.
It it might, so when we have ten thousand people, we'll have a N D P E S permit for stormwater, which is very similar to our wastewater treatment plant. Permit, but instead of wastewater, it's stormwater, they'll have restrictions and we won't know until we have a permit what we need to meet. Uh, but we will have treatment requirements, it's possible that the planter strip we put in today provides enough treatment. For that permit and that this area is covered and we won't have to add any more treatment for this area. Our goal is to accommodate that in the future, so hopefully this provides the right solution. If not, we'll be able to go into these planter strips, add some type of a filter media to accommodate whatever that future permit is.
And are these trees the planting strips?
Those trees are the planting strips and there, there's a typo on those trees, I think uh. This ten foot tree is a six foot tree, I apologize for that, so you've got a three foot tree, a six foot tree.
You got a ten foot and then an eight foot.
Eight foot.
Three, ten and eight.
So it should be three, six, eight.
I see.
Apologize.
Okay, so you don't want.
So. I have some other thoughts, I was looking and landed on the stormwater best management practices, that's the EPA site and there's a great little photo on there that. Kind of intermittently. Does away with planning strips. But it's also on a street that has a lot more density where people park on the street. Constantly because there's not enough parking for multi complex. It it was just a thought, but thinking about this street because the the multi complex is. Already got sufficient parking for the most part, but that's just a thought process, it goes along and every intermittently, the. The parking or the the landscaping strip goes away and there's uh two or three parking spots and then it comes back, so that's just a thought. I know, really stern thought, sorry ma'am. Holly just said that, or no Brandon just said, well, they both agreed that we just neck division down to eleven feet for driving lanes. So I think we really need to process the fact that this is a less busy street and we're deciding to have twelve foot lanes on it. So if anything, again, because this is a popular street, because it does go to the park. But it's not a collector or an artery, I think that a ten foot option is. Reasonable and because this does go from the library to the park, maybe that just increases the size of the planting strip. Which could make a beautiful street from our library to our park and create a wonderful neighborhood. Um, I am a biker, or not, well, I used to be a runner, I can't run anymore, um, a walker. A get around town any way I can kind of person, I'm um. I think it's appropriate to be riding your bicycle here if you're a small child or. You're coming off of surgery and you need to walk with your cane for a while or for whatever reason. Um, but I also think if we keep this street width very narrow, um, cars are gonna go slower because. They're gonna have to pass each other and it's gonna feel much, much more safe to ride in the road if you choose to and so want to, so um. And out and and then the final piece of that, the other option would be to intermittently. Widen the sidewalk in places, but I would have to say fiscally, it's more responsible to maintain. The current sidewalks that are there, um, but I wouldn't be against saying, okay, you know, since we're building new sidewalk, we'll just. Let it be a little bigger here and we'll. It'll feel more park like, there'll be some variation, it won't just be this, you know, very spreadsheet sort of like street, so I'm not. Um, opposed to that in any way, um, and on that same EPA site, um, you know, they list. Street with, um, for instance, in Santa Rosa a- at twenty feet. Um, Orlando goes down to twenty two feet, Birmingham, Michigan goes to twenty feet.
For what?
Um, for street with.
Oh, okay.
Um, so there, there's precedence for narrower streets, I think we all learned that narrower streets load the traffic. Um, the, the other piece of what I've also was reading in here that I looked at is that um. Solutions for accommodating competing interests, um. Talk about um emergency access and different things like that. Um, you know, this, again, it's not division, so if the cars have to stop, which they are legally supposed to do. Um, when you have an emergency vehicle coming through, then that's how the emergency vehicles come through. If the emergency vehicles have to take up. Both lanes as they turn the corner to get into a street, the cars should be getting out of the way. I mean, that's the way our system is designed, so that I would be okay with that, um, that's just my opinion. Um, but that's how I see the solution, so we would stick with the main design, we'd just be broadening. Um, the landscaping strip, which I would hope wouldn't throw a big giant wrench in what we've already put down, it's over seventy percent design.
Thank you, Councilwoman Monroe, um, we're here, Councilman Sproul.
Let's say we did a, just hypothetically, or any path, whether it's a ten foot path, eight foot sidewalk. Who's responsible for plowing? That, right, so let's say like, hey, let's do a twelve foot path with the bike and then winter comes and you got one responsible.
Right, so we currently clear Pine, the Pine Street path. Um, do we clear the Lincoln?
Our parks are responsible for all the multi use paths in town.
So then we go up to Vision as well, right, or Lincoln?
There's, oh, Lincoln's in the road, so I think that one is.
Okay, so Lincoln has the one I'm sure of.
Got that in the road, but they do flower traverses.
But if this was a multi use path.
There might be more workload putting on them.
I would suggest we all take a minute, design your ideal street and then let's go around the horn, talk about the pros and cons.
Mine don't add up.
Does that work? Yeah, you got fifty feet, the the lane, you'll have to add up the.
Is that what that's attempting to say?
Yep.
All three, right?
That's how I read it, yeah.
I don't have five foot. Trees.
Two trees. It's basically what, basically what she just described.
Yeah.
Two rows of trees.
But yeah, I love it.
I'm, I'm thinking about that silver maple. Like how can you work around it?
If you have a multi use path, the idea.
Just a little thing to think about, is you really want to try to keep it consistent?
That's how the fires.
So if we, if we have a bike lane on part of it, then we neck down and.
Parting both sides in a single lane. Would that, for thirty foot street width, probably maybe a little more?
That would be, yes.
There's also some traffic calming of lateral shifts. And.
Twenty eight.
True.
Twenty eight to thirty depending, okay.
So that's very local street.
Yeah, so you shift, you could kind of shift the whole.
Maryland.
Okay, so I grew up in Michigan, a good park on both sides of the street and you drove down and you had to find a spot to let the other car come down.
Straight away the whole way down, you see obstruction.
That's a big.
I was downtown.
Uh, subconscious about how wide open. Yeah, so to keep me on.
I'm supposed to be functioning, except because two way traffic instead of one.
But I'm observant, I don't see any other town around.
Um, our local neighborhood. The short part of Oak, not Oak from Boyer, the Torres Division.
Oak is, yeah. I actually just read an article about how they have a fund. To spend specifically on traffic calming, pedestrian.
On Oak.
That's just how I grew up, so.
Slowing down traffic for pedestrians.
In this scenario.
I don't know exactly where it is, but I think it's.
Don't know it's appropriate. Here, but.
But where, you know.
Because it's a collector room.
This concept, because it's not around us, and then go to Court Lane and see.
So in Old Navy. We did our first, yeah.
And that whole.
Yeah, I originally, I think the bigger sidewalks.
Use it on Ontario.
I actually did. Where, I have it up right here. When. Going on there.
Should we maybe.
And they're all cars apart and. Long street parking is a traffic coming.
Cause you just take it.
And you were subconscious to say, the door might open, it might jump out. We drive to be.
That, I don't know.
Well, on this side, you're getting rid of the nice new trees, on this side, it's a question for me, I'm, I kind of am. You would be getting rid of a lot more trees.
Think that you need to be an engineer or anything.
Cause the maple, or the maple's over here, is it? Yeah, it's outside, it's, I think it's right underneath his, his paper there.
You know.
Very similar, I don't, we have experts that we pay to.
Knowing how old this tree is in the life of the internet.
Right, and there's no way for me, I mean, this circle is worth it. Probably say that. I like that tree too.
So let's say in two minutes, be prepared to present your preferred layout. From the tree committee. Out that tree. Compel your fellow council members.
No health.
Was this designed, the tree hubber? This is based off the public. And the bike pad committee.
Tree commission did not go down that street.
They did walk the street.
Oh, I was told they only saw, I think Kyle said they only looked at that.
Four hundred. Maples can live four hundred.
But I believe.
It was presented to. I was.
Yeah, I mean, I had two maples in front of my house that keeled over at a hundred, yeah.
So this was what was presented to. Head by committee.
Right.
And they okayed it. This is what was okay.
Yes, the only comment that they had was.
Discussion about that at the urban.
Seven foot sidewalk.
To hear the fact.
That's pretty crazy, the, uh, four hundred years.
But I'm guessing the percentage.
Since you're here.
Yeah.
You're just pretending.
Like I said, I had four hundred. So sugar maples can go to three hundred. Probably not the ones that have.
Person who has this prep and unprep, there are.
But they were in the park, they're in the.
Do that.
The health trip.
Allow them. Any kind of temporary.
They're also under power lines. So the power company can come by every.
Did you understand the question?
I heard.
For one specific member.
Not one specific person. I'm saying for potential anybody, but make it so restrictive and, and difficult. Like you have to have, you know, your oaks cones and you have to have proper. I'm asking the question because I don't know.
Street or is in general?
It's why.
Have an opportunity to.
In the case where we only have ten foot wide lanes and we have no parking.
How big, like let's say we do that. We don't even need to go to one lane. We've got fifty feet here, so.
When I go by and I use my dad.
Five foot sidewalk, three foot parking lanes, and then two ten foot lanes, you still got.
Okay, you got two minutes to get it.
Oh, yeah, you're thinking. Down further as it goes out further.
Sidewalk.
But also, the other thing I was gonna say about that location is. Traffic calming measure that's actually identified in the staff report is a speed table. You can bring the road up above the roots as well as bringing it around the core route.
Yeah, so unless it becomes a hazard, there's.
But they don't, they do, they don't like the ones on Ella.
We're formalizing this street. So.
You don't always have to design exactly to what's.
Just pull off and park on the side.
It is important.
So.
Alright, who, like, let's start with, uh.
Yeah. Alright, so if you could just walk through your preferred, what you're grappling with, your preferred ending scenario and kind of justify why.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that there is a strong desire in our community to save as many trees as possible. There's debate on how long, particularly this maple tree, that people really are concerned about. Can we save? I don't think we have a crystal ball to know, no matter how perfect we try to get around it, to save it. If we're actually one really gonna save it and do all this work to save a tree that possibly is only gonna last another twenty years. Maybe, but Councilman Schreiber, just as we were talking, said this could be an opportunity if we do save it, even if it does die in the next twenty years. To create, uh, what'd you call it? A, a slowdown.
Traffic calming.
Yeah, lateral shift, I think is the engineer term. To slow traffic down. You know, people are coming down Cedar, they know that's gonna come, they're gonna naturally slow down. I like that idea as well. However, it's also hard for me to justify changing everything just to save this one tree. When I know we'll be planting more trees. I know there's debate there. The tree committee, I believe Paige talked about. You know, trying to save this tree as a expert, arborist expert, and I think she does great work. She does work for our trees and she's. Saved our apple trees and we're thankful for her wisdom and her professionalism. Uh, but in my perfect world scenario, say we don't, we aren't able to save this tree. I do like the idea of ten foot roads that have the option of share rows if you want to. Uh, share the road. I'm also a proponent of larger pathways for families and kids, but as we talked about. With the stormwater, the larger the. The, sorry. The, yeah, the better it is for stormwater. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm stuck there. Keeping the five foot would keep the consistency with. The, the sidewalks now, but as Council President Rule said, having different sizes and different. Could make it a little unique there and exciting, I suppose, but I'm not terribly gonna die on any hill on this one. I think that having opportunities for slower cars is probably the best. And not sharing, I agree with Councilman Howard on that. But I do like the shared pathways. My, I do feel safer for sure when my kids are on sidewalks and they're able to do that. I, I naturally just feel more comfortable as a father, but. I also haven't had any horrible experiences with cars going too fast in this area, but again, just because there's a bunch of potholes, so.
So is there a preferred fifty foot alignment that you have going from?
I have, I have three.
Okay.
Um, two of them, all three of them have a ten foot street.
So Joel, you were saying ten foot street lanes? Okay, can you go from south to north? If your preferred alignment, so from the left to the right on your.
Like on my chart or on this?
Um, on your chart. Yeah, go from left to right, like.
Well, they all, I mean, for me, it'd probably be middle, cause they're all ten foot. And the next one is going to be, um. You said that these are eight foot swells, right? There's six foot. Cause you gave us ten, three, eight, but it's supposed to be.
But the tens are actually.
Three, three, six, eight. But I think the, the width we can, we can.
Yeah, okay. So. Yeah, so what I have here on my preferred one, without understanding the stormwater benefit is. Twelve foot pathways on each side. Three foot swells. And then ten foot lanes. But as Brandon said, the larger the.
That's fifty. Okay. Wow.
But I'm okay with smaller sidewalks and larger tree, tree wells. That's, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. No, that's, that's interesting. I hadn't even thought of that layout.
Could, I just add one thing about the smaller planting strip.
Thank you.
Yeah, this isn't universal, but, um, I do have anecdotal examples of the, um. Subdivision. With the pond in the middle of it over.
Maplewood.
Maplewood. They did, um, two to three foot planting strips and tried to put trees in them. And we've had to take a couple of them out because they died and didn't survive. So there's a little bit of precedent, just so everybody's aware. That if you shrink those planting strips too much, the trees may not survive.
At the narrowest point.
Should we go around the, the horn? Kyle, do you have a preferred alignment? Like that, we could describe going from left on the little handout to right. Like in.
Well, uh, yeah, I concur with. Both so far who've, um, expressed preference for the ten foot. You know, I'm comfortable with putting a shero paint in the road if, if that's helpful, but I also. Agree that separating, um. Bikes from traffic is the ideal situation. On the south side, I think a five foot sidewalk. Consistent with what's already there, it kind of makes sense, although I'm open to a wider sidewalk. The north side, I'm, I'm intrigued with Councilor Espiro's twelve foot path. Uh, like I said, it's not in our multimodal plan to have a path there, but as I think about it. You wouldn't want a path that just goes for one segment and then stops, right? But on that north side, there isn't a sidewalk from Division to Fifth Ave, so. Um, if we started with this and put in a path here, it could conceivably. Continue in the future along the north side of Cedar all the way to downtown. It's not identified on our multimodal plan, but. Now that I think about it, now that it, Councilor Espiro's mentions that, maybe that is something that, that would make sense. The, the alternate for me is, um, since this isn't identified in our multimodal plan. Perhaps we leave the sidewalk off of that side altogether and, and reallocate those funds somewhere in that is identified in the plan. I'd be interested to know what kind of cost savings we'd have.
No path, then? Just the sidewalk on the south?
Just a, a continuous sidewalk on one side, I think is more than most streets in town get. So I think considering that this wasn't identified as a, a pedestrian priority street. Having a continuous sidewalk on one side is a pretty good improvement. Um, if and only if that money is reallocated within our pedestrian network somewhere else. I don't want it to just get thrown back in the pot and be used for asphalt somewhere.
Yeah, the money gets mixed because some of it comes from water and sewer and, um, I couldn't promise you that right now, but. I, I do have a couple of questions on that though. So we were talking about this internally, the, the library is on the south side. So if that shared pass on the north, does that, doesn't that cause people to do another crossing? If it's on the south, does that make for a more, um, less friction for somebody being on that path coming to the library? Is throw it out there as a, a thought.
It would also mean, putting it on the south side would mean tearing up continuous sidewalk all the way from. Division all the way to Fifth, because there is continuous sidewalk right now on the south side of Cedar all the way to downtown. Yeah, so you would have to tear up existing sidewalk to expand it to a path, yeah. Whereas on the north side, there's nothing. It's a blank slate. So you could put a path the whole way. I could picture that, yeah.
And you've got thirteen feet left if we do your twelve foot on the north, five on the south with ten foot lanes. I assume that's planter strip. Six and a half and six and a half.
Um, yeah, plantership. In terms of the width of the planter strips, I think something that's important to think about is. Where there are power lines above, because you have to plant much, much smaller trees where there's power lines above. And so deviating the width of the planter strip according to the size of the tree that you're gonna plant. If, if there's no power lines above, we should be maximizing the planter strip on that side. So that the bigger tree has bigger place to grow and can actually grow to be a big, healthy tree. And on the side where there's power lines, where you're gonna plant like a Hawthorne or something that's only gonna be ten feet tall anyway. Maybe you don't need an eight foot or a ten foot, um, planter strip. Along that same lines, yes, I am advocating for it to not be consistent on both sides. And I think there's an advantage to that, that. As we know, straight roads encourage people to speed and I believe it was during the, um, comp plan hearings. We had a, a resident speak very tearfully about people speeding past her house killed her pet in this neighborhood. So I, I think. Knowing that brand new pavement is gonna bring out the hot rotting teenagers, I think we do need to. To look at some traffic calming measures like lateral shifts that were chicanes back and forth. And we can accomplish that with differing sizes of planter strips. Um, we had kind of a sidebar conversation about that silver maple over here and whether, um. A lateral shift to get around that tree was enough to protect the roots. I also noticed in the staff report that it mentions. Speed table as one of the potential options for a, a traffic calming measure. And perhaps if we use the both in conjunction, lifting the road up above the roots. As well as shifting it as far around the tree, um, you could accomplish some traffic calming and also save the tree.
Thanks. Yes.
Just to add to Kyle's, um, I don't know what the rest of the Cedar right of way is from Division to, um, Fifth Ave. Do you know what the right of way is?
I can measure and find out.
I'm guessing it's much bigger. It's at least sixty feet, is it not?
Between Division and Boyer or downtown?
Eighty.
It's eighty feet. So my suggestion would be not to worry about that, because if we were actually as a multimodal plan. To take that all the way downtown, which I think is actually a pretty good idea, and I know I'm on a tangent, I'll be brief. That we would narrow the road width and just put the path in there and build new curve.
Yep.
So we would have a slower street and still have parking.
Yeah.
So I don't think that it's. I understand your premise of putting it on one side or the other, but I think it makes more sense to have it on the library side of the road. And you do already have existing sidewalk on the north side of Cedar too. That you'd be tearing up. So anyway, just something, I will talk about that with, um, bike committee and, and such about. Just additional thoughts with Monty Mulder. Yeah, that's not gonna happen for twenty years, but we can plant.
I like it. I like Cedar getting reduced to the, I, I live on the west side of town and for me, coming into downtown. That's the preferred route of Lincoln down Cedar.
Yeah, I have my house, I live off Cedar, so it's pretty busy.
It's a nice way to get down.
Neck the road down and put in the path, and then you'd get from Traverse to downtown, plus you'd get the library.
Really like to turn Main Street to one way and have the other half up pedestrian overboard, but.
Tangent.
Yeah. Rick.
Dreams.
What are your thoughts on your preferred layout? Going from left to right on the page?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start just with the constraints that I had in mind. Um, two that I started with. Obviously, I like the separated bike lane, so that was a priority for me. I also recognize the existing sidewalks that are there at five feet. I said, makes sense to use what we've got. Let's not disturb that. Let's make them uniform all the way down. So when I. When I start with those two as priorities, I have, uh, on, so start with a five foot sidewalk. Let's leave the planter strip for just a moment. Um, and then I have a, the only one you gave us was a six foot bike path. Um, I think it actually could go to five and I can make my planter width, uh, strip a little wider, but. So I have a five foot sidewalk. Let me just, so I have five foot sidewalk, three foot planter strip right now, six foot bike path. Eleven foot lane. Um, I, I love the idea of shrinking from twelve. Uh, there's obviously a cost advantage as we go from twelve to eleven to ten. It's more cost efficient to build that road. I think ten is a little narrow, as Jeremy and I were talking, people that drive pickup trucks. With big mirrors on the side are almost nearly ten feet wide. And I mean, nine, three, nine, three. That's not a lot of. So, um. So I, I could live with ten. I put eleven in there. I think that takes the whole fifty. I could see us, um, maybe narrowing the bike path to five feet and put another foot into the planter strips on both sides. But I'm uniform left and right. I personally think it's goofy when we change both sides of the road. Um, I, I'm, I'm just one of those that I need a bit of uniformity. That's just the way my mind thinks. So when you're creative, it, I, I don't like that. I think things need to be uniform. Um, but that's, that's what I would propose. So five foot sidewalk, three foot or four foot planter strip. Five or six foot bike lanes on both sides and a eleven foot car lane in the middle.
On both sides of the bike lanes.
Yep, bike lane on both sides.
And then, um, that's gonna, by my count, still leave you a couple of feet on the north, you're saying.
Five foot sidewalk on the north as well.
Yes, yep, uniform. Both sides of the road, it's a uniform.
Uniform, yeah.
And so.
Five, three, six, eleven, eleven, six, three, five.
Yep, and it could be five, four, five, eleven. If we'll, if we could narrow that. Uh, again, I don't know what the proper width for that bike lane would be. Five, four, what?
Five is the minimum. I think mash of sometimes allows four feet, but in sample point, five is our minimum and six is strongly preferred.
Yeah, cause I, I do agree with you. If we could use that for the filtering of our stormwater, a four foot is better than a three foot planter strip. So, yeah, if we took that to five, but.
I just want to add, not trying to keep my personal opinions out of it, but just so everybody has the right information. The curb itself is two feet wide.
Oh.
So I believe my guess is that on Holly is. So I believe my guess is that on Holly's bike lane, that probably includes the curb maybe. No, is that not right? Do you already have the curb as a separate thing or is it part of planter strip? Anyway, just be realized that um, there's a two foot curb typically and eighteen inches is the gutter pan, and we can't count that as the bike lane. So we can't. It's gonna be from the, what we call the lip of the curb, which is where the asphalt.
So leaving this as six foot gives us the room to accommodate those, I think is what I hear, yeah, so. But yeah, that's, that's the way I kind of designed my.
And I'll just piggyback on that if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I had the exact same thing, other than the ten foot lanes. And I appreciate the width of the trucks with the mirror, but I also figured it'd be slowing, uh, more calming effect on the traffic as well too. Uh, but I think bike lanes are pretty standard for what we know in Sam Point. Uh, for both the drivers and the bicyclists as well too. Uh, and I think that offers some continuity and you still have approximately five foot sidewalks that. The young ones could get on and some better wayfinding and signage there.
Um, thank you, um. Cuz it's a workshop, I'll throw out my design, um, I hadn't thought of that alignment, Rick and Justin, um, I kinda like it. But one of the things I'll say, if you've gone down Oak, I think it's one of our nicest streets in town, I just measured it. The planning strip on Oak is twelve feet from the sidewalk to the curb. See where I'm talking about on Oak, right?
What was lost?
Uh, this is Oak and um. Florence.
What?
Yep. And. And I I bring it up just because if you drive down that, it's like, wow, you you really could feel like you're not in a normal. City street.
And I think you get those massive trees.
Yeah, I think that's wider planning strip is really um, important. Cuz it's separate, it really separates the cars from pedestrian or the biker. So what I had was a ten foot bike path on the south, shared use bike path. Lined with the library, um, a six foot planting strip. To eleven foot lanes, a six foot planting strip, and then a six foot or five or six foot sidewalk on the north. I like Justin Ricks because with those five foot sidewalks, we're not, one of the kills me is to rip out sidewalk. That costs twenty thousand dollars and was put in a couple of years ago, I mean, that's almost makes me sick, but um. Yeah, my thought, solution to the bike was let's make a a pathway on the south side, run it all the way up, I'd be able to do some speed tables. That would help that tree maybe, um, I know that. Uh, Holly was mentioning they like to do those at intersections uh, for the crossings, cuz it elevates pedestrian, if you do get hit, you're less likely to get hit.
When a short kid can be seen over a taller roof.
Um, yeah, that's my thoughts.
Um, would we have to rip out that sidewalk this year?
We could DVA for just that, that portion, we could add to it maybe, that'd just be a question to Holly, Holly and those folks.
Yeah, Kyle, were you talking about north side having sidewalk all the way or south side having sidewalk?
I'll, I think it's. South side five foot all the way.
Yeah, I think it's a no brainer that we have a continuous sidewalk along the south side, that that makes total sense to me. The I, the thing I hadn't really even considered until Counselor Espiro said it was a multi-use path on the north side. So I'm open to that, definitely.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember, had you already shared?
Can you give us um, your preferred layout?
Um, ten foot driving lanes. Um, I think I'm okay with continuous five foot sidewalks with which there. And then expanding and contracting the planning strip as needed. Um, I would definitely be open to um, the possibility of uh. Decreasing planning strip to do a south side path with the thoughts that maybe we even paint. Um, divisioned Boyer Cedar to neck lanes down as a short term solution. To thinking about pathway there.
So you're saying a built pathway on the south side is what you're thinking outside the planning strip? Five foot.
South side path, yeah.
Uh, um, and adjacent to the travel lanes.
No, there's still be planning.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I'd be open to that, but I'd also be open to just keeping five foot sidewalks on both sides and expanding the planning strip. And creating a calming effect by.
Where the bikers go in that, just in the ten foot?
Well, um, just in the sense of having more planning strip. Um, and narrower lanes and then eventually someday having twenty year old trees. Um, that probably have more opportunity to grow with an eight foot wide strip that you start to create more calming, just. By the nature of how things come together, but I would be open to shrinking a little bit to to get that pathway of. Um, we felt like that could eventually be a connector from Traverse Park to downtown and. Getting that into the multimodal plan and all those other pieces and parts and even talking about paint um, from division to Boyer. On Cedar to.
So that, just clarification that on the south side, I I'd written five foot sidewalk, then a bike path, but.
No, it would just be a bike path.
Okay, so.
It would just be multi.
We're kinda on the same.
Yeah, multimodal, I'm open to the multimodal south side.
And um.
It, I had to take that two feet away for the curb, not messes me up.
You don't have to worry.
Okay, well, anyway, so I had a five foot sidewalk on the south side. If that's because it's mostly there, except I do wanna go around those trees. And um, I had asked Holly if she had asked the woman who lives there, the man or a woman who lives there. If they would mind a sidewalk on their property, making that, cuz I know she commented that she wanted to save that maple tree. Um, then I had a ten foot green space because, yeah. That's the calming, that's the beautiful, that's the street you're talking about on Oak and and Oak, and then I have two ten foot. Narrow lanes with sharrows, so you can choose to ride on there and cars will see that there might be bikes there. And then on the north side, I had a five foot planting strip and a ten foot multi-use path. So with the different differing sides, again, it changes, it's not a speedway. You don't get on there and just think you have to go straight as fast as you can, even though it's twenty five or thirty mile. So mine are alternating.
Yeah, well, I don't have any alternating, I have five on the south, ten foot planter, two ten foot lanes. Five foot planter on the north and a ten foot path.
Oh, that's what I have.
Oh, it's what I said, yeah. You're saying alternating, but I I don't see that as alternating, I see that as a consistent all the way down.
But it's different, the planter strip is wider on one side, the bike path, the multi-use path is wider than the sidewalk, so. So it's gonna look different.
Well.
Mister Mayor, just to clarify with mine that on the south side where there is the new existing sidewalk. Even though I'm open to that, multi-use, I wouldn't tear out that sidewalk. Maybe add to it, maybe just leave, leave it until it's time to replace it and then do it at that junction.
Because if you put something on the north side, it would cover those sections of sidewalk that are already there. Cuz there are some on the north side too, and if not taking them out.
Super productive, I think we, I'm seeing consistency in some things. I think everyone but Rick and I think ten foot lanes uh, is is appropriate, are appropriate.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. For those who, I mean, I think if in a perfect world, we'd all want that tree to stay there. Let's say that tree was not existent there, would anybody's view change?
No, mine, cuz I cut it down in mine.
Yeah, so. Cyber to cat, seems like.
What do you mean?
So let's say that tree wasn't there.
Yeah.
Would your plans change, like in your plans, is that tree still there?
Yeah, because I'm diverting the sidewalk.
So that tree's not there, we can't, we don't, we can't even guarantee if we try to save it, we do all this work to try to save it, that it's gonna be saved or even last another twenty years. If that tree is not there, does that change any of your two plans?
No, I think there's still benefit in lateral shifts in the road, even if the tree isn't there. The the visual barrier is an additional benefit beyond just the lateral shift. But the lateral shift in itself is a traffic calming.
I'll make sure I understand.
S- slow down, and I also mentioned to um, Holly that if you could make that speed table. Where the roots of that tree were, like Kyle had said too, might save that tree.
Just to be clear, there's no guarantee that we'll be able to save it.
Of course, there's no guarantee we're gonna be on that road tomorrow either.
Okay, so I think ten foot lanes have it, um, anybody wanna say anything? I think we can move on that as a consensus item, anyone?
And so I, I didn't share.
There's actually action, so action.
Is it?
Yep. If we want, but I don't think we need to right now.
Uh, before, before the ten foot decision, uh, so I've spoke to our standards twelve foot lanes, we have them downtown. Um, one thing to consider in making your decision is our snow plows. So our snow plows, the blades on our plows vary anywhere from ten feet to twelve feet wide. So if um, when they operate them, they do, they're very large vehicles, they do angle, so um. They typically aren't going down the street with them perpendicular, so they are a little more narrow than that twelve feet. But just uh, as a driver, if you were on the other side of it and you have this plow coming down and you've got twenty feet of asphalt side to side.
My card doesn't pass.
You you don't have much room in your curb to curb, so you don't have much room to hop a curb, um. When you're thinking about travel lanes, remember in the scenario, it's curb to curb. So in this case, if you just have travel lanes in your scenario, you don't have a bike path or a shoulder, your asphalt pavement width is. Um, that twenty feet, um, that's your minimum for.
Do you gain those two foot of gutter or are you including that in the road? So you're measuring from the perpendicular to the perpendicular.
Asphalt, uh, no, this is, this is your asphalt.
So you would gain an extra what to get to the curb?
Foot on both sides.
So as far as passing is concerned with the snow plow, you'd still have, you'd have twenty two feet. You wouldn't have twenty.
If you were going into the curb, and in the winter time, we do have difficulties clearing and keeping that curb clean cuz it builds with ice. So your your asphalt is the, when we're looking at um, this scenario, the the block top is your asphalt. It's just something to.
No, no, I just wanted to be clear on what I was considering actual width, I understand, I understand the icing piece, but I just like. If it were twenty feet and we were counting to the perpendicular, that's different than if it's twenty two to perpendicular, because you're not counting. That what creates the curb is also part of the horizontal surface, so that's where I wanna.
Do we have ten foot lanes anywhere where we have curb in town that you know of six?
So we do have ten foot lanes in town, they're typically, um, our turning lanes are more narrow and they're ten feet. But we don't have anywhere in town where we're twenty feet curved, you know, curb to curb. The last thing, just to, I know there's many articles on lane widths and narrowing them for traffic calming, it's an awesome tool. Johns Hopkins did a whole study, I bet many of you are familiar with it. When you dig into that study, when they um, look at areas with snow, their recommendation for um, collector roads is eleven foot travel lanes. That's the only considerations I'm on.
I just wanna add one other thing a- about when you have the two narrower lanes with curb on either side. One of the downsides is that. Um, if you don't have a little bit of a shoulder to cheat over when you have two cars passing each other or two trucks. The vehicles will drive on that concrete curb and the joint between the asphalt and the curb. Um, is it, we we shouldn't be designing it so that people could drive on that curb. And so it can create ongoing maintenance problems, that joint is really susceptible to, if you're having people drive on it constantly. To having separation and then um, causes potholes and.
And Holly, so i- if we had a ten foot lane in the winter and whoever's plowing it doesn't plow right to the edge of the asphalt. Right, there's a little residual that sits on there, so they're actually, in the winter, those ten foot lanes. Are probably actually even narrower, right, we don't get the full ten foot lane.
All of our roads, you see them kind of shrink in the winters, uh, fortunately, this will have a curb, so they'll be able to plow to the curb and try to keep that gutter pan clear, but.
Yeah, but they tend to be that far off, they they, no, I've not seen any.
Is the eleven foot a good compromise or no?
Well, I think it, I think it gives you the flexibility to allow some of these variables that we sense to actually make sense.
I I would be nervous driving my truck with a plow coming at me in a ten foot lane, if he's ten feet wide or she. Um, I I do, I I think the eleven strikes that good balance, I just measured six, which feels pretty narrow to me. It's twenty six, twenty seven feet of asphalt, twenty six feet of asphalt, um, so thirteen foot, um, there is on street parking there. Yeah, I I would, I would think eleven does both, it provides for plow flexibility. It also is lower than the twelve, which helps with traffic coming and with some tabletops, um, but. Cost efficient.
Quick question, there's, there is a section on the western end of this project area that already has curb on both sides. Is that curb gonna stay? So the new development on the south and the houses directly across the street?
Yeah, I see that.
So there's already curb on both sides, I'm curious, number one, if that's gonna stay, and number two, what the the street width is there?
Can tell you the way.
I I I think almost certainly, I I Holly's probably pulling up the actual engineering drawings, but I think almost certainly. We're replacing one or both of the curb anyway, so the one that you have on the other side, I think is this vertical curb.
Thirty two feet.
So regardless of whether we put it in place, it's, we'd wanna replace it with newer curb and gutter.
They said it was thirty two.
You know, cuz they used to do that where they would just pour the vertical part of the curb. But when the stormwater is running in that joint between the asphalt and the curb, it ends up breaking it up a lot, so. The best practice is to replace it with curb anyway, so even if it was in the same spot.
So it's irrelevant that there's existing roadway there, I was gonna say, why not math that we have?
Yeah, the the curb is going to be, it it is to be demoed.
Okay, that answers my question.
And the reason that um, the curb was placed where it was and the sidewalk was placed where it was is. When new developers come in, they look to that UATP, that standard cross section, and they build. Not a half street improvement, but they build their sidewalk, planter strip, curb and gutter in accordance with that plan. So those developments were put in, their their vision was that typical section from the UATP.
Okay, just pause, we've got two gentlemen here who worked very hard, does anyone feel like they need any comment from? The fire chief or police chief, so we can let them go, so.
Do you guys have anything you wanna add?
I feel, I feel like we're, we're moving along pretty good, but I know it's dinner time.
Didn't Chief Gilchrist say that your fire engines could get around those?
Get around.
Those, the corners onto the narrower streets the other night when you spoke, it's not the preferred.
Fire, well, the fire code said that the absolute minimum on uh, for access first street is twenty feet, so. That's, that's the fault of it, um, but it also has um, certain degrees uh, that the curb without the need for the wheel to make that turn. I think ours is twenty four, I actually have one. Twenty four or twenty eight or something, yeah, twenty four, twenty six, yeah.
I think you have a career in planning. Okay, so getting back, uh, anything else, Chief, uh, Coon, uh, anyone need them? You're welcome to stay, but don't feel obliged, thank you. Um, so revisiting the ten, eleven, do we wanna do something that's never been done in Sam Point and go with ten? And be visionaries and progressive, or do we wanna work towards that goal? And maybe give a little more room for error for someone driving a truck in a.
I wouldn't lose sleep with eleven feet.
You wouldn't lose sleep with eleven?
Personally, but.
Do we have to go in foot increments, could we go ten and a half?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Well, if you put it together, it's even number.
I don't know, there's like yards and.
Yeah.
If it make, you know, sometimes if you're doing sheet rock, you have eight foot ceilings.
Right, that's what I ask, yeah, do we have to do?
You don't have to, no, you need, you don't have to go.
This soft, what I've got on streets, it goes half foot increments, so we can keep it to half one.
Oh, no, I want like three inches and then eight.
Ten and a half sound like a good.
Fifteen centimeters, whoa, really thrilled.
Fifteen centimeters. Whoa, really thrilled.
As given the uncertainty of the amount of snow that we have in the winter, that I don't think we should go below eleven. Because in the winter, you're gonna be at ten more than likely because there's residuals on both sides. Maybe even worse in a heavy snow year.
I look forward to a heavy snow year. I think they're gone.
I look forward to do ten on the bike lane and you've got plenty of room for snow.
Great point. If we did have a bike lane, it gives us an opportunity for.
Okay.
Do you have bike lanes on both sides?
Yeah, I'm talking about it's two trucks. I'm not, I'm not.
I mean, um, Holly, everything I've, I've heard is the bike lane is on the other side.
Okay. That's a little bit small.
Yeah, to me, that's.
You can put charos.
Out in the winter, we're doing ten foot lanes and we still have one lane. Then you have a lot of variation and to play with.
But you don't have.
You can even have no street party during the winter, so you.
Different street that's had parking.
As you go down. Especially when there's not.
We have a majority on the lane width. Uh, I'll just restate it, Deb. You can go with eleven, Joel can go with eleven, and Rick is very comfortable eleven. I'd like eleven. Um, but. Take me out, looks like three would go with eleven. Justin, Pam, Kyle, ten versus eleven, or ten and a half versus eleven.
I can deal with eleven.
Does anyone have a problem with ten and a half?
I don't.
I mean, if you think, is that ten is to share, short, ten and a half would give you an extra foot.
Yep, uh, you know, for me, um, snow on the curb, um, I can tell you when I'm grabbing my mirrors out, it's. I'm nine-three.
Your mirrors, you're dragging in the snow on the curb?
Nine-three, and then so that gives me uh, a foot and three inches, so seven inches on either side.
You might have to fold those mirrors in, man.
Yeah.
How often, I mean.
How often are two nine trucks passing?
Well, I lost one the other day. It wasn't me, I was in my lane. Little over because they were far from the park. Yeah, I, I, you know, I think we're spreading errors, but.
Yeah, when we're all driving self-driving Teslas, we're not gonna worry about.
Less material.
Yeah, less stormwater. I mean, that's something that we haven't really touched on is the amount of impervious surface.
Being a foot of, of planting strip or six inches it is.
And an extra foot of asphalt that's creating this.
Ten and a half, ten and a half. Ten and a half. Okay, we've reached consensus, ten and a half lanes.
No, that's an interstate.
Ten and a half lanes.
Okay, so moving from there, um, let's start on the north side. We've got proposals for a twelve-foot shared use path on the north side. We've got proposal from Joel. Kyle likes twelve-foot path on the north side. Rick's five-foot sidewalk, Deb's five-foot sidewalk. Uh, Justin is five-foot sidewalk, Pam's ten-foot path.
But I could go bigger. So. I mean, if we have to fill that space in.
Yeah, on the north, um.
Bigger planning strip.
It looks like.
Yeah, I've got big.
We're kinda tied there. So we got twelve, twelve, ten, Deb, where's Deb? Five, five. Five, it looks like.
With a. Joel, would you be okay with path on the south?
Yeah.
And just five foot on the north?
Yeah, I'm totally same.
Okay.
That, that was just.
Yeah.
Branching that.
Yeah, awesome.
There you go. And how is that sit with you, Kyle, is doing path on the south and sidewalk on the north?
My only concern with the path on the south side is how do we save the trees?
Right.
And you didn't want to rip up all that new sidewalk.
I think we can maybe add to it or deviate.
Yeah, I would say deviate or um.
Just for my.
Just go back to five.
Or ten foot.
Ten-foot path, is it marked that part of it is for walking and part, what, what's the signage on that or is it free?
You could put signage, I guess.
Sometimes they have it two-directional.
Right.
If it's busy enough, I think you can sign it. If it's not, people will figure it out.
I don't think there's any signage on the Dover path.
We've got a mixed, sometimes we have dedicated lanes, like along the Seine Creek, we have dedicated lanes in other places.
If you go to Spokane, they dedicate some of that stuff. That's a pretty busy path.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't see that volume on there unless there's a.
And if we put charos on the road, bikes don't have to be on that path.
Okay, I think we reached consensus on the north, five foot with concerns about the tree.
On the north? My concern is about the trees around the south.
Yeah, no, but this is assuming we're gonna move this, potentially talk about this path on the south.
What kind of path on the north?
No, five foot, five foot on the north. Um, we maintain, we don't rip out all that existing sidewalk.
If there's no restrictions, if you wanna ride your bike on the sidewalk anywhere in Sandpoint except for the downtown core, you can. If you wanna ride the street, you can.
You happy with?
Freedom.
Um, cool. So then, um, moving from the north to the south, five-foot sidewalk, now we're talking planter strip. We've got everything from Joel, three, but that was with twelve-foot, Kyle, six-and-a-half-foot planner, Rick, three-foot planner. But that was with a bike lane in the road. We've got um, Deb, variable, Justin. Like Rick's, so that's.
Big planter strip.
Pam wanted five. Um, I think we have a little extra room to play with. Can I suggest a six-foot planner on the north?
Sure, yes.
Then what are you gonna do with my bike path?
Well, it's gonna be converted to this ten-foot shared.
I'm gonna move it to the south. Through the way, I mean, it's, that's true. It's not interacting with cars in any way.
I like that. And the idea that would be plowed rather than plowed in.
Yeah, residents will love that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so boom, we got then ten and a half, ten and a half. Now moving on to the south side after that ten and a half foot lane.
What did, what did we make the planter strip then, just?
Somewhere between six and seven.
Okay.
Um, so that's twenty-one, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three. We've got seventeen feet now. Which would be a ten-foot bike path and a seven-foot planting strip.
And I suppose, south side trees.
Deviated.
Deviate path, south side trees.
So we haven't talked about the path. I wanted to focus on, or the tree, I'm sorry. Wanted to focus on the street section, um. Uh, just to give you a little bit of information, it's in your packet and um, I'll just talk about typical tree save. Practices. Um, if we were interested in change, saving this silver maple forty-three feet wide. Um, common practice, we need to get an arborist to come in because this is a very large tree and. Um, because of its condition, if we are doing construction near it, it may be a hazard tree. So we'd wanna make sure that if we decide that we're gonna save it.
It's like they're just for thirty, yeah, right. What's the circle represent?
So there's two circles.
Trip line.
So this is the um, the smaller circle is the trunk of the tree in the center. Our uh, curb is right through the middle of that tree. This is uh, the, the trip line, or there's another name for it that I'm blanking on. Um, your critical root zone. So this is just without being um, an arborist, some quick math and common practice. You take the diameter of the tree, a breast height, and convert the inches to feet. So the critical root zone of this tree varies by species. Again, this is general practice, is forty-three feet. That's what this is. So when we're in construction, we have to be really careful of all the roots within this area. And you can see that's almost the entire right of way. So when we build sidewalk projects. We tried to dodge and um, go around and to get out of the critical root zone. In this scenario, we don't have an opportunity to dodge the road. We're also building, uh, reconstructing the road, so our excavation is gonna be two feet deep. So if we did lift the um, the road to have an elevated uh, crosswalk, that would be very helpful. And that would probably be required to try to save the tree.
There're gonna be a, a lot of increased cost. Would be a limiting factor for me and then, and I know we're talking mainly about that. But there are, are there a number of other trees um, on the south side that could?
Just the next couple of trees over, that property owner had expressed a desire to keep those trees. And they're all pretty small aspen trees, but it's a nice beautiful grove of them. And so the idea was perhaps we could ask that property owner to dedicate a slight bit more right away so that we could deviate, deviate closer to their house. And avoid the gar, the trees that they wanna save.
Yeah, I'm questioning whether or not we can really save that maple. I mean, if we can do some deviation with smaller trees, I'm all for that. But I think if we're ending up not being able to continue our street the full length to try and save the maple, that.
I, I would just tell you, that's not a, I mean, yes, it's an old tree. It's not a majestic, beautiful tree.
That's not the tree. The one that's on the, the, that tree doesn't exist anymore. That tree's been cut down.
It is a beautiful majestic.
I was on the wrong.
Look at it. It's amazing.
I, I apologize.
I mean, when you walk by that, you have to stop and, and look at it to see how it is grown. It, I have to anyway, and I've walked by it bazillion times.
And so you're right that you, you do wanna protect that critical root zone, but you also have a road that's already on that critical root zone. So it's not like it hasn't been disturbed in the past.
Yeah, but I think we go down to lay fabric and grow rock and we go a little deeper.
Right. And it's, I think it's, a lot of it's about driving heavy equipment across it and things like that. You wanna protect it.
And do we know, does that tree have rot? Do we know that I see a big hole on the side of it?
Yeah, so one of the, a member of the uh, tree committee did go out and inspect the tree and found that it was healthy. There is, you can see the spot where there used to be a big branch and it's completely healed around that, that spot. So it's not like it's actively rotting or has any uh, health concerns.
And I did send that I Tree information to Holly that talks about the runoff it saved. The air filter, the carbon sequestering, that tree is.
Yeah, but we're gonna offset that with all of the new trees we're putting in the planter strip.
It is a nicer planter strip for sure. Well, I, I think that's um, I'm not sure we can answer that question right now. I think the best we can do is ask some designers to assess and do a dual. Design and look at the cost differential and impacts and probability of saving it. And what does it take to do it the right way to save it? Deviations of paths, one of some savings and materials there, maybe narrowing the road in that one area.
True.
An arborist to look at it.
I think we can give them some creative license if we can just give them some general direction.
The grove next to it, I think we will be able to do a lot with.
This is to the um, the east.
If you just turn the screen just to the left a little bit. Yeah, there's the aspen grove. And aspen, the roots tend to be pretty uh, robust. So even if you had to cut a couple of them down, I think they'd probably sprout back up. But considering that the landowner there asked us if we could preserve that, I think we should.
So one thing we um, we did explore trying to. Move the sidewalk back here. There are some great challenges here, so when we build our new road and we have equipment out there grading. There are two, it's much lower back in her yard than the street. The street's a little raised above it. So when our engineer looked at grading, um, and I, I don't know if I've got that at my fingertips. But um, their grading went back into their yard, so. While the permanent solution will have a gap between the asphalt and the sidewalk. If we didn't have to grade, we could save the trees, but the reality is we are gonna have to grade. So we're gonna have to wipe out between the asphalt and the sidewalk just because of those great challenges. So we explored that option of can we sneak a sidewalk around those trees and save them in the planter strip? Because we're grading the road into the existing topography, those trees have to go.
Is there any chance we could do a step down rather than grading it? You know, like we have those planter boxes downtown where it steps down into the planter box. Could we just have a taller curb drop on that side?
Like a wall? Essentially, it would, it'd be like a, a wall?
A well. Yeah, it'd be a concrete curb on one side and a concrete wall, I guess, that's a foot or two tall on the other side.
Uh, that was not explored, but we could consider it, um.
Do you have, do you have an estimate? What's the age of those trees?
The aspen?
Yeah.
Oh, I have no idea. Some of, it's pretty widely varying in that little, I, do you remember what she called it?
I believe her, so the, the property owner who lives there, she loves these trees. Her husband planted this forest for her, I believe, thirty years ago.
Okay.
It is lovely.
And aspen kinda grow from the roots, so you'll have some that are thirty years old, you'll have some that just popped up last year. Yeah, and there's an aspen grove that's what, like a thousand years old?
I wanna point out, um, not to burst a bubble on the silver maple, but you see that eight W? That's a replacement of the waterline. And those don't go at the surface. So there's going to be a significant trench dug right down the center of the street. Or uh, water and sewers going, and I believe we're upgrading both. So I don't know what that does to the critical root area of that silver maple, but that could be a fatal flaw and very expensive to deviate around.
Hmm, that's a good question. I don't have an answer.
So just to point that out, but I think we can look at what, what options, look at the costs, look at the, the barriers.
Yeah, certainly there's a cost at which it wouldn't be worth it. So if we could come up with a estimate and discuss that as a group.
I can throw rough numbers pretty confidently. Um, in construction, we call it risk. Those are our unknowns. What if there's a critical root in construction in the middle of our water main and what is the condition of the tree? That's where we'd have to have an arborist on site making that call and helping us make the decisions on what roots to cut and, and whatnot. Um, uh, to save a tree like this, we're chucking tens of thousands of dollars very easily. Um, so at the low end, at a very minimum of confidence, gonna be more than ten thousand, fifty thousand would not be. Unreasonable either, so.
And I would recommend we get paid from the tree committee. There is a.
Yeah.
To maybe.
Page, yeah.
So go with you just like, like realistically, what are the options? What are we looking at? Not that that's gonna be the way we go, but that might give us a realistic expectation and price option and. Really, hey, that's too much. That's not realistic for. Then at least we could say, hey, we, we, we checked that out, but we have to make the, what's best for.
Yeah.
An arborist would absolutely help identify, you know, the route mapping needed and.
Just my two cents.
Yeah.
And we have Paige as a volunteer.
We volunteer, sorry, Paige.
Um, I guess, um, just to try to bring this, uh, what I'm hearing is the alignment we discussed, which is five in the north, six and a half to seven, planting strip. Ten and a half lanes, seven-foot planting strip, ten-foot shared use bike path on the south. With instruction to uh, add to or minimize um, any sidewalk removal, infrastructure removal. On the south side where there's new apartments are, add to it if possible. And then look at deviation around trees and forests for possible land dedication and step slopes. And then finally, sort of a cost analysis on, and barriers to what does it save, what is it to save that, that tree? Um, we didn't talk about tabletops.
I'm not a fan only because of the snow plows in the winter.
I think that there's a lot of potential for this to turn into a, a hot rod jack, drag strip for the local teenagers. And I think we need to incorporate some um, traffic calming measures, whether that's lateral shifts or chicanes. Or bump outs or something, um, just so it's not just a straightaway with fresh tarmac for a jet fighter to take off on.
I agree.
Um, we have a tabletop on Ella, did you say? How, how are those performing?
The feedback I've heard from our plow crew is that as long as they're signed, so that there's a tabletop and they can see the sign in the winter. They slow down and know where to anticipate them. Um, and that's very helpful. So it slows them down, but they, um, they like the, the longer, wider ones. As opposed to the more abrupt.
Do kids, uh, do cars jump them? Do kids, uh, do cars jump them, you know?
We, we have had neighbors say that they see teenagers speed up and try to get some lift off of them.
So they have the reverse effect. I guess as a child, I remember riding around the block across the street from my house, because on the backside of that block, this. Concrete was all messed up, it was our favorite ramp.
For cars?
No, we were on a bus, you know, but we went there specifically to launch ourselves off that little. Piece of concrete that had heaved, because, you know, it was like six inches.
And the ideal placement, um, Holly is at intersections, I'd heard you say that, I thought, but.
It, it's a great, a great locations to, um, have better visibility for pedestrians as they're crossing the street, so a dual purpose.
But the ones on Ella aren't necessarily. Right. Yeah. One more thing that, uh, I want to point out that the tree committee talked about, um, was this Willow at the corner of Willow. And there was concern that the sidewalk was gonna disrupt the root structure there, and, um, our urban forester. Incorrectly informed the committee that there was not going to be any sidewalks on the north side of the street, so, um. Knowing that there will be, I would ask that perhaps we don't do this, uh, sidewalk extension that heads up to Willow. Because it doesn't connect anything anyway, and that would help preserve this really gorgeous Willow tree that's on the corner there.
Somebody told us at the council meeting that that wasn't gonna be. It'll be you or Eric.
Me, um, we're, we're not impacting that tree. We can make sure that it's protected and keep our sidewalk.
Yeah.
Is what they said last week.
So I can, here's the Willow on the screen. I can get my screen to work, sorry. Um, so you can see the critical root zone, we do have sidewalk here, it's on the edge of it, so during construction, we'll just, uh. Have mitigation, it's, it's a lower.
Measures that are in the code.
Yep.
And what does a tabletop cost, do you think?
Yeah, I think we can X that out of the design altogether. We don't have one there, we don't have one there.
Yeah.
We do have one at, at Madison, but that's because that connects to an. But this doesn't connect to anything, so I think we can X that out of the design and protect this, have you seen that?
Pretty big rework redesign, um, throwing a tabletop is. But changing that road section.
Yeah.
So based on the modifications you've heard, do you think this project can? Get designed and go out this year?
Well, I don't think we'd want it to with these changes, I think we'd want to take it back to the public. Um, because this is really different than what we presented to them a few months ago. Um, so we'd want to say, hey, public, here's what we've changed and here's what's happening, um, so that, so that's one piece, and for the redesign lift, um. Probably at least a couple more months, maybe three more months of design.
There's still maybe not impossible for like a July start, but.
Um.
Looking unlikely.
So we.
Because you could do those in parallel, right, the design and the public notification could happen in parallel.
Yes, you risk that if we're not in alignment and, and you, you risk developing the project and then rework, which, here we are. Um, so we've kind of already done that once, um. That's, that's one thing that you'd risk doing that in parallel, um. Some invisible costs, you try to get your projects out in the spring, in the summertime, when this would be bid, if we were trying to get it done this year. Contractors are busy, so they're more likely to just throw numbers at it than to, um, be a little bit hungrier like they are in the spring, they're already, they're booked. Um, so not impossible by any means, but just know that, uh, our best prices are.
February.
It's one flight.
And, and just keep in mind that we'd have to give our consultant enough time. To at least provide another concept to present to the public, so that's not gonna happen at the next meeting or probably. I'd be surprised, Holly, if you disagree, let me know, but I'd be surprised if that happened even in April. So we might be looking at maybe before we just present another concept to the public.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, might I bring up one other thing?
Please.
Um, I had a great, uh, session with Holly last week talking about this, and Wayne is in the room, he's on sustain, our sustainability commission. Um, I think we're all pretty excited to get the commissions and the committees back. Right now, so this is already, this design that we were showed has already been through public comment. It's been through the Vic Ped Committee, uh, and it's been through a portion of the tree committee as well, or at least they walked through, right?
We did not walk it.
What's that?
We did not walk it. It was presented to.
Of course, okay, did some, well, okay, it was presented to you guys, right, and I know we're in the very early stages of these. But, um, you know, and then here we are as a body, changing things around after it's been through, but we also have sustainability. Who wasn't involved in this group, our arts, culture, or historic preservation. So might this be a good opportunity moving forward, especially with a capital project that all group, this is a great exercise, this is probably one of the cooler things I've done. So far, especially working with streets, sidewalks, and roads, right, so it's really, I, I'm very grateful for this. But if this is potentially a shared exercise that we do, or something along these lines with all of the groups, and I understand staff time is, uh. That's why I said maybe we all collectively get together and we say, okay, maybe arts, culture, historic preservation, you've got signage and wayfinding on this, right? So you don't need to be involved in as much as this, sustainability might be able to help out with the, um. The tree swells and, you know, they're also working with the urban tree, but by the time this comes back to us at council, right, um. We've already seen it, we've got public input, we've got all the commissions, we've got professionals that are taking that time on those commissions. They're happy to be heard, even though they, they're recommendations only, um, and we see government in this community working together.
Yeah, amen, yeah. Yeah, so it's sounding like this is probably not gonna happen this summer, which is fine, we can work with Sarah and Holly and start to pivot those dollars. Towards other overlay projects. Um, um, in regard to the commissions, we're, we're having some challenges right now, given example, we spent a thousand dollars on staff time. To determine whether six trees should be saved or not in the parking lot. Um, many of the commissions now have subcommittees, some of those have subcommittees of subcommittees, some of those are calling state agencies representing themselves as city representatives. We've got, um. Commissions who are trying to put their agendas and their legislation on the commissions. So, um, actually tomorrow, uh, we're meeting with all the liaisons to tally up what's going on. Great idea, fully supportive, but they're a little bit out of control, so I'm gonna try to rein them in, I'll bring it to all the council. Um, love your point, but I, I guess the takeaway for me is, I'd like these committees and commissions to be more directed on the projects we want, kind of like the planning commission. We set the agendas, we set the meetings, they do the work that we've requested, they're not just out. In the wilds, going a million different directions, because we don't have the staff time, um, it takes a bunch of staff to run a committee meeting.
Parks and Rec today was talking about creating.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm like, oh my, that's my big challenge of the day, actually, uh, is how to get our committees. A little more reined in, but anyways, yeah, I think what you're saying. Well, and Holly, um, is working on a very consistent process, I, actually, I'm wondering if, I know we have standards, but. And this is a planning tool that lots of planners use, but, um, what a great way to start a project. Council's initial feedback and thoughts, I mean, how do you design every project like that, we don't do that many, so.
I wish it would be a good time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
So, um, I think Holly and Brandon have some direction, I have some direction, really appreciate your feedback, um, super helpful, I feel really comfortable with what you've. Come up with as a preferred layout here, I think it meets all of our constraints and addresses the, the issues that we face, minimizes disruption of infrastructure. Um, good stuff. And.
Be a model.
The, the act, there might be a sweetener in all this, which is that property all the way on the end, we are actively trying to work with the Vista about. Potential stormwater movement through there, which could save. Hundreds of thousand dollars of the project, because right now the stormwater goes to Lincoln, and the plan is to dig up Lincoln and put a big pipe in down to Pine. And this could be a, a really cool alternative, that we can work with the Vista on that property for stormwater, so. There could be some, uh, some good, good aspects beyond just the obvious, so.
One thing that I was considering as I was looking at this project is the idea of collector roads versus gridded streets, and if you're talking about this. Property right here, I would ask that we look at extending oak the rest of the way, so that we can accomplish that.
I think that's a requirement of any plat that came through.
Okay, good to hear.
And subdivision, what we're talking about is, right now, there's historical sheet flow, surface water that flows there. And, um, enhancing and helping them, helping us avoiding a new pipe, maybe even a demonstration. Um, Cat Nine Tail Water Filtration Project, it's all very preliminary, but we've reached out to them saying. Can we talk about this property and how we could work together on it, so.
Final thoughts that, not deal breaker again, but if we find it that it's harder for staff or it's cheaper just to go to eleven foot, I don't think that should be a deal breaker.
Thank you. Yeah. Good, well, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by, um, I think Dick, seconded by Espiro or President, President Rule, thank you very much, council members, the meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-three.
Thank you.
Awesome, good job.